All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Wednesday, December 15th, 2021. Meeting's called to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. The flag is behind me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this evening, we're going to start out with a special presentation and a special service award. So I'm going to come down onto the floor, call Chief LaCombe and Lieutenant Pinkerton up from the Police Department, up to the front as well, and any of the board members who would like to come down, or you can stay in your seat if possible. It's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we appreciate the opportunity to honor Officer Commune for this service award.
We all know Ms. Marty, so you didn't go on Officer Marty.
How's best to do? Should we do it in this direction? Or should we do it in that direction? I guess we'll do this direction. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. We're here to honor Officer Marty Commune, Martin Commune, but I know Ms. Marty, of course, for 40 years of service to the township, which is an extraordinary feat. Oh, yeah, I'm going to take this off if you guys don't mind while I'm speaking. Marty's worked for the township for 40 years, but Marty's done a lot more in the township than just work here for 40 years. Marty's been a police officer. He's a past fire chief. He's life member of the Fire Department, and he started his career as dispatcher, right? That's what it is. And something special that I want to share is that Marty was the first person that appointed me as an officer in the Fire Department, and many years ago, probably 35 years ago, so.
Oh, make mistakes.
Yeah. Yeah, and everybody said, just whatever he tells you, do the opposite. So, but really, an extraordinary career here. The township's a better place for having Marty here. Really just an example of not just an employee, but a community member. And we're just excited to offer this service award to you. So, thank you, Marty.
In our line of work, police work, it is very unusual for anyone to last 30 years, much less 40 years. It is very unusual. And when I thought about Senior Officer Commune being honored tonight, I thought about how many officers in our department actually made 40 years. And to the best of my recollection, I also spoke to Lieutenant Pinkerton. It's probably only been three since our department was formed, any officers that made that length of service. In addition, he served 22 years in the Fire Department. So cumulatively, what is that, 62 years of service to Northampton Township, and dedicated service. Marty is one of the hardest-working, most dedicated officers in our police department. And I really appreciate all he's done for the department and all the township, all these years. Lieutenant?
I think one of Marty's biggest achievements has been the technology that is brought to the Police Department. From the time when he started, when we were using old manual typewriters and handwriting our reports, to now we have mobile data terminals, and we have the best technology in Bucks County in our police cars and in our police station. It's a first-rate police department due to Marty and his contributions to technology and also our booking center. So, congratulations, Marty.
I appreciate the recognition. Wish every officer could experience this 40 years into their career. Be fantastic. And Adam, thank you for being a friend for.
Good friends, for sure. Thank you.
And there's a gift. There's always a gift. You can take your mask off at the picture.
Cheese.
Can you guys come up too for a picture? Have the family up as well?
Hold on, Marty. Hold on.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And now the Police Department has a special introduction for all of you in the community. It's going to be our new K-9 unit. If you could bring him in. Officer Hearn and K-9 Pico. Officer Hearn and Pico recently graduated the Philadelphia Police K-9 Academy. It's an intensive 14-week course. Pico passed with shining colors, and I believe Officer Hearn did as well.
Not as shiny.
We haven't had a K-9 for about 20 years, and we're very fortunate to have such an excellent officer as a handler and an excellent K-9 like Pico. He's a great dog. He's friendly. Everybody that comes in contact with him wants to pet him. Officer Hearn says he's always looking for love. And tonight, I want to present Pico and his handler, his badge. Pico has a specially-equipped Ford Explorer, and you'll recognize the vehicle because there's a dog with Pico on the side of the vehicle, on the side windows. So if you see that vehicle in your neighborhood, you know it's Officer Hearn and Pico. Sir Hearn, did you want to say anything?
I just want to appreciate, I take the time to appreciate the support that you guys have given us, especially the Chief and the Lieutenant, and the entire department really entrusted me with a big opportunity in this program. Hopefully, we can make it grow. Hopefully, we can, if you see me driving, like I said, the Explorer, drive around the street, stop by. Pico's always willing to get out and get pet. If a dog can make somebody knock on my window and want to talk to me and have a good encounter with a police officer, I think that's good for our department and the profession in general. So if I can be a part of that, and Pico can be a part of that, hopefully, it goes well, and we can keep it here in Northampton for years to come. And I'm open to any questions, if you guys have any questions.
Maybe you could just give us a little insight to what Pico's trained in, what his specialty is.
So over the last 14 weeks, he's gone through basic patrol, criminal apprehension, tracking, article searches, building searches, which is pretty much, the article searches goes into evidence recovery. Even if there's a pair of lost keys, lost in some open field, he's able to go take the human scent that was left on air and go track it down. Tracking missing endangered peoples, juveniles, or criminals that have fled the area of an investigation, he's able to, our noses will never be able to track them down. He's able to use his nose to track down where they're going and where they're hiding. Building searches, burglaries, anything like that, that we could, that hopefully avoid the township, but if we do run into it, the Pico's able to go in and find them, where they're hiding a little bit better than we can, keeping our officers safe. Instead of going into a building where the unknown, he can send Pico in first, and he can track it down a little bit faster and a little bit safe. He's going to scent school, explosive detection school, January 3rd. He's going to be imprinted on 26 explosive scents. Like I said, we go there January 3rd. I'll have more insight on that when I'm done that, but we're looking forward to the opportunity.
Great. Anybody else have any questions? I know we're excited to have them on board, for sure.
We can't wait to get back out in the streets. So we'll be around, and like I said, if you guys need us to stop by, or we can stop by, we'll walk you through. Nice little break from your busy workdays. We'll come in and we can provide that, too.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Welcome.
There's your badge back, Pico. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, Lieutenant. Give them, give a minute for the room to clear. Thanks, guys.
Congratulations, Marty.
Thanks. Congratulations again, Marty. Do we have anybody on the public comment sheet?
One.
One? So we have one public comment tonight, and I'll call to the podium. Sarah Shaw. Sarah is from Richborough Turnpike.
May I sit here, Chairman?
Please. And can I have your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Sarah Shaw, Richborough Turnpike, which, I have been told, is now called Second Street Pike. Silly name. Is it a street or a pike? Well, anyway, I came here tonight to let you all know that 299 years ago this week, my husband and about 20 of our neighbors went to the Quarter Session Court in Bristol to petition that the 40 families that lived in about 26 square miles become an incorporated area. So on December 14, 1722, the petition was approved, and the Township of Northampton was forever distinguished from the adjoining settlements. I was wondering if you were all going to do anything to mark the occasion, when I found out that a committee was formed with a Mrs. Silver being the chair. Amazing. Women can be chair people. In fact, the committee is made up of Mrs. Opalka, Mrs. Satterley, as well as Mr. Brier, Mr. Artie, and Mr. Hens. Everyone in Township government will have a part to play. This will be going on all through 2022, as they are planning many activities, as you all will be cherishing the past, celebrating the present, and welcoming the future. Catchy slogan. There will be programs and events that will focus on the township's history and provide opportunity for residents of all ages to learn about the township's history or share with others the history they remember. They are planning to get interested residents to share their stories about life in the township, both past and present. I hope they will allow some of my friends to participate. These stories will be compiled by the Senior Center and the library staff and showcased at events later in the year. Interesting facts about the township will be shared weekly through social media, whatever that is, and then used as clues as trivia night hosted by the library. The schools, heard you had the best, will contribute to the fun by participating in the Paint the Plow contest. It is a snow plow, not a horse plow. The plows will be painted with a 300th anniversary theme and will be on display throughout the summer at the individual schools and then all together at the Anniversary Festival weekend. You will be able to walk through the municipal park and learn about the township's rich past, as displays will be erected along the trails describing a particular landmark and history. Each landmark has been selected because of its significance to your Northampton community. Other activities will embrace the community spirit and are planned solely to have some good old fun. You will want to watch for activities scheduled for the spring and summer that will embrace the 300th anniversary theme. One thing for sure is you will definitely want to mark your calendar for our festival weekend scheduled for September 24th and 25th. On Saturday, from morning to night, activities, workshops, and entertainment are planned throughout the township, including the library, Senior Center, Recreation Center, Parks, Police Department, Fire Department, Tyler State Park, Churchville Nature Center, and the Langhorn Rod and Gun Club. And on Sunday, you all are having your Northampton Day 300th Anniversary Festival. We are so glad it is back. There's more to come in October with the History Mystery Dinner and Celebration on Friday, October 14th, at the Northampton Valley Country Club. Hmm, maybe I can get one of those handsome gentlemen on the dais to take me. In November, contests and challenges are being scheduled with all things 300. Finally, December 14th, 2022, exactly 300 years to the day when Northampton became a township, there will be a celebration at the Board of Supervisors meeting to commemorate the anniversary. I am so excited that you are all going to celebrate 300 years, but I am also excited that you are all going to learn what an amazing place Northampton Township is now. It was a pleasure being here. I got to go now, and I hope I was crisp. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw. We did receive one public comment via email, which I will read. It is an agenda item. And just as a reminder, for the public comments, you can email in at publiccomment@nhtwp.org. So this is from Patrick McGuigan at 38 Rotterdam East in Holland. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on our 2022 budget. Our spending in 2022 will total $47.3 million, an increase of 9% over 2021. Our revenues in 2022 will total $42.57 million, an increase of 16.4% over 2021. We also received $4 million in federal stimulus funds at some point in 2021, which are not included in any budget. Excuse me. The 2022 budget calls for a 16.75% tax increase. A little history here. In 2018, we were assessed a 15.3% tax increase. At the time, at that time, we were told that this increase would be good enough through 2021 and possibly a little longer. It anticipated three to five years of government services and infrastructure projects. That four-to-five-year promise lasted one year. In 2020, we were hit with a 24.2% increase, a major miscalculation, given that we were, that we told, given that we told that we would not be seeing another one until 2022 at the earliest. In summary, then, we are looking for a total tax increase of 67.2% since tax year 2018, when we were told not to expect anything more until this year. That's an average of 13.4% per year. Of major concern is our debt bomb. Total payments now stand at $113 million through 2046, up from $21.5 through 2027, five years ago. Annually, we'll see an increase of 65% to $4.6 million from that $2 million payment, starting in 2024, a massive new tax obligation for 19 more years. Our country club continues to bleed red ink, showing a $2.47 million deficit in the new budget. It is intended to stand on its own without taxpayer assistance of any kind. I contend that deficit spending, in conjunction with our debt obligations, will require double-digit tax increases year in and year out for some time to come. We do not have a revenue problem. We have a spending problem. Thank you for the comment. Any other? I don't think there's any other on the list. We'll move to consent items. Approval of minutes. Frank?
There are no objections. I request at the minutes of November 10, 2021, and November 17, 2021, approved by unanimous consent.
I think we heard. If there's no objections, approved by unanimous consent. Thank you. Accounts payable. Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for December 1st, 2021. Total all funds, $237,365.50. And I have the bills list for December 15th, 2021, $965,914.98.
If there's no objections, approved by unanimous consent. Okay, thank you. This time, I'm going to open up a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance updating various sections of the Township Code of Ordinance for Administration. Eileen?
At our last meeting, we authorized advertising for a public hearing for this evening for an ordinance amendment to the Township Code addressing administrative and inconsistent items. The ordinance was probably advertised in the advance of Bucks County on November 28th, 2021. Specifically, the items in the amendment include membership requirements of the Blight Committee, eliminating the residency requirement for the Township Manager position, deleting the fire insurance proceeds, escrow requirement, amending soliciting requirements, modifying building numbering requirements, and adding board and commission expectations. May I make the motion, sir?
Please.
I move for approval of Ordinance Number 612, amending the Northampton Township Code related to general administrative requirements and the elimination of inconsistent provisions.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Open for board comment. Eileen, anything?
No, sir.
Kim?
No, I'm good.
Frank? Barry? And none for me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and that closes. Oh, I should have asked for public comment. I'm sorry. Is there any public comment? I don't think there was anybody here, anyway. Sorry. Okay. Close the hearing. Thank you. Next up, consider resolution authorizing participation in the countywide FEMA PEMA Disaster Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Frank?
Following the significant impacts of Hurricane Ida on many local communities, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, known as FEMA, recently announced that it was accepting letters of intent to participate in a hazard mitigation grant program to help mitigate the impacts of flooding and improve emergency preparedness. Program is part of a $3.46 billion allocation for 19 recent federal emergency disaster declarations. While the details of the program are still being developed, the Township Administration believes it is prudent to file applications for grant funding under the program to improve our emergency preparedness, improve stormwater management, and address several longstanding flooding conditions. These include converting detention basins to infiltration basins to comply with our municipal separate storm sewer system, commonly referred to as an MS4 system permit, conducting a township-wide stormwater management study, installing emergency generation at the library, the Senior Center, and the Recreation Center, so that these facilities can serve as emergency shelters, improving the stormwater system along Sackersford Road. The estimated cost for these projects is $1.6 million. Although documentation from FEMA states there is a 25% match, we have heard from our contact at the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association Agency, commonly referred to as PEMA, that the state will pay 22% of the matching requirement, leaving the township with a 3% local match, or $48,000. FEMA announced this grant program early last month with a short deadline to file letters of intent. The administration filed three letters of intent for separate projects that include the above-listed items. This did not commit the township to the matching funds, but provided the ability to file formal applications when the grant program officially opens. In anticipation of filing formal applications to fund the projects, the administration believes it is prudent for the board to adopt the resolution and authorize an individual to file formal applications in advance of the program application period. FEMA will require this authorization anyway as part of the application process. The resolution that we have to adopt is a standard-form document that FEMA regularly, is used by FEMA as well as PEMA for other related grant programs. Obviously, we will need to review the particular requirements of the hazard mitigation grant program and discuss our township obligations for any proposed projects. But given that FEMA often provides short windows of opportunity to prepare and file grant applications, I believe the board should address the authorization requirement at this time. I'd like to make a motion?
Please.
I move to approve Resolution 21-24, authorizing the Township Manager to file grant applications with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to fund stormwater management and emergency generation projects to mitigate the impacts of flooding in various areas of the township and to enhance the township's ability to provide emergency and to enhance the township's ability to provide emergency shelters during severe storm events.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Open for comment. Any further comment, Frank?
None for me.
Eileen?
No, sir.
Kim?
None for me.
Barry?
None for me.
None for me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution authorizing issuance of a tax anticipation note for the 2022 calendar year. Kim?
Due to a projected reduction in the township's cash position through the first four months of 2022, the Finance Director recommends the board authorize a tax anticipation note, which is a short-term loan used for cash flow purposes in anticipation of tax receipts expected in April and May. The township solicited proposals from several financial institutions and received a very favorable proposal from the First National Bank and Trust Company of Newtown to borrow $3 million for fiscal 2022 at an interest rate of 0.75% for the period between January 15th, 2022, through May 15th, 2022, with no prepayment penalty. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R-21-25, authorizing the issuance of tax anticipation loan from the First National Bank and Trust Company of Newtown at an annual interest rate of 0.75% and authorizing the appropriate township officers to execute all necessary documents in connection with the loan.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Kim, anything further?
We did the same thing last year. This is just a short-term loan to just get us through until we get our tax money in. That's all.
Thanks. Barry, anything?
No.
Eileen?
No, sir.
Frank?
Nothing.
Okay, and no comments from me. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next, we have consider a resolution authorizing short-term loans for equipment acquisition. Still, Kim?
Okay, hold on. All right. Each year, the township seeks proposals from qualified lending institutions for a short-term loan to finance the acquisition of capital equipment. This year, the Finance Department solicited proposals from nine potential lenders for a $750,000 loan with a five-year term. The township received two proposals, one from Penn Community Bank and the other from TD Bank. The other financial institutions either declined to submit a proposal or did not respond. Based on the proposals received by the Finance Department, TD offered the lowest interest rate at 1.59% with an estimated annual installment payment of $157,230. If approved by the board, a master lease purchase agreement will be prepared for execution prior to settlement, and the township would secure the funds before February 28th, 2022. The capital equipment will become township property when the loan obligation is satisfied. In order to secure the loan, the board must adopt the attached resolution authorizing the loan obligation and designating a township official to execute the loan documents. May I make a motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R-21-26, authorizing the township to incur a five-year capital equipment loan in the amount of $750,000 with TD Bank for the acquisition of 2022 capital equipment and authorize the township manager to execute all documents required for the loan.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anything further, Kim?
I just wanted to say that a lot of this are mowers. We have a lot of, we do a lot of mowing in Northampton. And also for some plows, backhoe, bobcat, a lot of the, this is just basic stuff that we use for our community.
Thanks, Kim. Eileen?
Just to ask the question, isn't this something that is on our acquisition for these from each department?
Yes, these are for various departments. And I would add that the equipment that we are purchasing has a much longer life than five years that we're borrowing them for.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you. That's all, sir.
Thanks. Frank, any comment?
A question. Is there a timeframe that we have to execute this agreement to keep the interest rate that we now have?
Come on.
You're on.
You're on. I'm not sure, Frank. I'm not sure, I can't recall what the loan, what the proposal said. I think we could probably accept the proposal within 30 days of submitting it to hold the rate. But the rate is pretty good, and we only had two interested lenders. And frankly, the reason that we only had such small interests is because the amount, relatively speaking, is not that great. They're looking for loans of a million, $2 million, or more, and that's some of the feedback we got from some of the other financial institutions. The amount of the loan was just too small for them to consider.
Yeah, my concern is that this is the end of, this is the last meeting of this board's term. We have an incoming board starting January 3rd. Would this have been more appropriate to be delayed to give the incoming board members an opportunity to review it? I'll just ask that as a question. I don't know what my fellow board members think of that, if any.
I'm not sure if that's necessary. You know, I mean, we're approving the budget for 2022, this board, even though the new board's coming in January, so. My personal view, I think it's appropriate that we're approving it.
I do, too.
And I'm okay with it as well. I think it's always going to be a rolling situation there.
That's all I had.
Thanks. Barry, anything?
No, that's it.
I have no comments. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next is to consider an agreement with the Miracle League of Northampton Township. Eileen?
Thank you. The Miracle League and the Township began a partnership in or about 2008, when the Miracle League constructed athletic fields within Municipal Park specifically designed to accommodate individuals with special needs. Over the past four years, the Miracle League and the Township have been working together to expand, improve, and renovate the existing playground facilities at Municipal Park to be an all-inclusive playground facility. It will include the addition of equipment specially designed to enhance the ability of all individuals to enjoy the fun of playing at the playground together. Through state grants and Miracle League fundraising, the improvements will include expanding the current footprint, replacement of the surface, and fencing of the entire playground. A partnership agreement must be facilitated to specify the Township and the Miracle League's contributions to the project and outline future responsibilities. The total project cost is $675,500. We secured grants in the amount of $375,500, and the Miracle League is contributing $300,000 to cover the balance of the project cost. May I read the motion?
Yes, please.
I move to authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to execute the facility partnership agreement between Northampton Township and the Miracle League of Northampton Township to fund and construct an all-inclusive playground within the Northampton Township Municipal Park.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments, Eileen?
The only thing is that I was pleased to see that the agreement, we all got copies, and I hope we all had the opportunity to read it. And what it was basically was dealing with, if you read the agreement, is that we didn't have enough money to put a covering over it. And so, it was $75,000, and this agreement really decides who will be paying for that, when and if, you know, the funds become available. And also, just like the other agreements that we had for the fields, after this is all finished and this is all built, it is the township's playground. So that is one thing that was very specific in the agreement also, and I think it was needed. So I'm all for this. I'm really looking forward to the build day that we're going to have, where we all can come out if, when this is signed, sealed, and delivered, and we can all go out and have fun building it for our children.
Thanks, Eileen. Kim, any comment?
I think that this is such a wonderful thing for our township. I don't think there's a lot of townships around that have an all-inclusive playground, where children of special needs and kids that don't have special needs can all play together in a safe environment. I always call it the Blue Park, but it is always filled with kids and filled with parents, and I think this is just going to make it more special. And of course, the Miracle League, I feel, is one of the best organizations around, and this is a wonderful thing for our township.
Thanks, Kim. Frank?
I want to congratulate the Miracle League for the very successful fundraising that they had, given the very difficult circumstances that we've been living through for the last year plus. I certainly support this, and other than that, I certainly can't add anything beyond what my colleagues here have said.
Thanks, Frank. Barry?
Yeah, I'll agree with everybody else's comments, and I am equally excited about it. I bring my grandchildren in all the time, and it's a great park, and I think the fact that it's being expanded for kids of special needs is really very important. And it's very nice that Northampton has this for people. It's a great opportunity for people to go to the park with their families, things like that, so very excited about it. And I want to thank the Miracle League, too. I think those guys that work there are very, all volunteers, and the fact that they raised $300,000 is really significant, so I certainly appreciate that. So thank you.
Thanks. A quick comment for me. This is a good project. This is a really good project to do, and I echo Frank's comments. Congratulations on the fundraising effort. That was really an incredible effort over the last couple of years. Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a report on the 2022 revised minimum municipal obligation for police and non-uniformed employee pension plans. Frank?
The township is required by law to submit a report to the Board of Supervisors on the municipal, minimum municipal obligation, or MMO, for each of the employee pension plans by September 30th each year for the following fiscal year. The MMO represents the funding level required by the township to maintain the actuarial soundness of each plan. As required, the MMO was submitted on September 25th, 2021, and the required financial obligation was $2,096,006. This required contribution was based on an actuarial valuation report as of January 1st, 2019. At Township's request, the Township actuaries completed a new actuarial valuation report as of January 1st, 2021. The report would typically be completed in the first quarter of next year and filed with the Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General in March as required by state law. Township manager and the Finance Director asked for the updated actuarial valuation report, knowing that the positive market returns on our pension plan investments in December 2020 may have the effect of reducing the MMO for 2022, and that the township has the ability to submit a revised MMO to the state prior to December 31st, 2021. In addition to preparing the update, the actuary also calculated a revised MMO for 2022, indicating that the Township pension plan obligations for next year could be reduced I recommend the township use the revised MMO in the preliminary budget and reduce our proposed general fund appropriations by $207,259 for 2022. A vote to approve the revised MMO is not required, but this information must be included in the meeting minutes for auditing purposes. The motion to grant final approval to the 2022 budget must acknowledge that the preliminary budget will be amended prior to the final adoption by reducing the required MMO appropriation in the general fund. The prepared motion to adopt the final budget includes this acknowledgement. If approved, the Township manager, if approved, Township manager will execute the revised MMO calculations and submit them to the PA Auditor General's office. Addition, I would like to just congratulate the manager and his staff for having the foresight to get this issue revised and to eliminate a $207,259 expense in the general fund. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Frank. Next up, consider adoption of the 2022 preliminary budget.
I'm ready. Say it again.
Next up, consider adoption of 2022 preliminary budget. Eileen, thank you.
The proposed 2022 budget was presented at our November 17th Board of Supervisors meeting, and the preliminary budget was adopted by the board at that time. The proposed budget was advertised for public inspection on November 18th, 2021, and a copy was available in the Administration Building. The proposed budget continues to fund emergency services, maintenance of public roads and rights of way, recreation services and programs, park maintenance, refuse and recycling collections, and the operation of the library senior center. Appropriations also include debt payments on outstanding bonds, funding for infrastructure improvements, and capital equipment purchases. There are no proposed reductions in township services. May I make a motion to adopt the budget, sir?
Please.
I move for final adoption of the 2022 preliminary budget to include reduction in the required minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniformed employee pension plans.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Eileen?
No, we had a very nice PowerPoint at our last meeting, given by our manager, and it was quite, everything was explained, and if any of us had any questions, we were able to speak with him and his staff and just to let the public know that on a $40 million budget, probably a little more, we had absolutely no phone calls, and we had no one coming in to look at the budget. So I think our staff is doing something right, that people do feel that this budget is a proper one and something that we are going to go forward with.
Thanks, Eileen. Barry?
No, I support the budget. I think it covers a lot of town functions, and yeah, I support it fully.
Thanks, Barry. Kim?
I also do, and I think our manager and our staff did an excellent job on this budget. We've had a rough year, a rough couple of years with COVID, and they've made lemonade out of lemons.
Thanks. Frank?
Well, I support the budget. I just have a question that I would raise. Now, one of the things in the budget is that we're projecting a negative fund balance for the Country Club of $306,031. We're also doing a transfer from the Country Club operating budget to the capital fund of $504,000. My understanding is that you can transfer from an operating budget to a capital budget at any point. You cannot transfer from a capital budget to an operating budget once you put the money in the capital budget. So I would, just had the thought that why not reduce the transfer at this point in the budget process from $504,000 to an amount that would free up $306,031 and just have a negative, a zero fund balance showing
a negative, a zero fund balance showing for the Country Club in, you know, in this 2022 budget, with the understanding that clearly the incoming board can transfer those dollars in anytime they want.
Any comment on that, Bob?
Turn your thing on.
I was just looking at 32.
It is generally correct that we can't, we should not be transferring money once transferred to a capital fund back to operating. I don't know that's a hard and fast regulation, but it's generally good practice, once you commit the money to capital. If we don't transfer the money, then we have to trim back the capital appropriations that are planned for next year at the facility. There are some very important things that we need to do to improve the golf course and the buildings in general, and there are a number of pieces of equipment that we deferred replacing last year that we really need to replace, and that's why we have the money appropriated the way we do. We've committed to have the Country Club pay for itself. It has been doing that. Any work that is done by the Public Works Department, for example, is reimbursed back to the general fund, so we are trying to maintain that distance between that enterprise fund and the rest of the township budget, and I think we've done that. I don't have a problem operating the Country Club with a deficit in its operating budget. I think businesses do that. We're trying to run it as a business, but I do think there are some very important things we need to do to reinvest in the facility that we identified actually prior to its purchase. So I'm comfortable with the budget the way it is. It's certainly not my decision to approve the budget. That's the board, so you can change it if you wish, but I would not recommend it, and I think the way we have it set up, we're going to do some improvements to the facility, we're going to do some improvements to the golf course and some of the buildings, and replace some of the critical equipment that we need to maintain the golf course. I do think, at least from what I have discussed with the general manager, we are on an upward projection for revenue. This year, we expect 2.2 million in banquets. As you know, we suffered with a $2 million loss in 2020 as a result of the COVID restrictions. That year, I think we only generated about $600,000 or $700,000. So there's been a big improvement. In 2023, the projection is north of 2.5 million, and our goal is to get that number up toward $3 million, and I think with some of the changes that I've seen there and some of the improvements we've made and changes in the staff that have made the place a better place, we've had a significant increase in golf, probably a 10% increase in golf rounds from 2019 to this year. That generated another $250,000 in revenue, and again, I think our problem was in the banquets, and we're seeing a big improvement there. Bookings right now are close to $2 million going forward, and I don't see a reason why we can't fund the things we need to fund. If we take them out, I'm not sure how we're going to get them back in in 2022, and if we're borrowing money for equipment, for example, we already, I've already mentioned that borrowing $750,000, well, it is a lot of money to banking institutions. It's not, and we had trouble getting quotes, so if we're going to borrow anything less than that, I think we'd have some trouble doing it if we do it later in the year, not to mention that the interest rate is about a percent and a half. So it's up to the board, but it's not my recommendation to revise the budget at this time.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Sure.
What I just proposed would not have impacted the purchase of the equipment because the equipment loan is shown separately. This is the transfer from the operating budget to the capital budget. It has nothing to do with the equipment.
Well, it actually does, because if we don't transfer the money, we have to reduce the appropriations in the capital fund for the Country Club.
I thought that the, I thought that the, that the, that the funds for the equipment didn't go through the operating budget of the Country Club, but went directly to the capital budget of the Country Club, separate and distinct from the dollars that are transferred from the operating budget to the capital budget.
That is correct. The equipment-
So, and it doesn't impact the equipment?
It does, because the, if we don't, if we borrow the money, we've got to have a way of paying it back.
Well, that's why I proposed only, only doing it to the net fund balance, which would leave over $100,000, well, actually would leave close to $200,000 still being transferred, so that you had the money to pay the interest on the, for the equipment.
Right now, we're showing a, we're showing no fund balance in the Country Club capital fund, and the only revenue we have are the proceeds from the lease, from the loan.
I thought that's where the loan money went. Where's the loan money go, then? Doesn't it go directly to the capital?
It goes into the capital budget.
Directly?
Right.
Okay, so what, well, obviously we're-
Then we have, if you look at the, if you look at the appropriations, you'll see expenses for equipment and expenses for some of the improvements to the facility, and you'll see debt, principal, and interest.
Yeah, but I, okay, well, I believe that the, that the, that the two are separate and distinct, and that the other money coming in from the capital fund, as I read the budget, the amounts I'm talking about had to do with the improvements to the buildings and didn't have anything to do with the transfer, since that, those funds go directly to the capital budget separately. But, okay. I'm not going to meet a dead horse.
I'll just ask for formality, since you did put an offer in. Did the motion maker want to change the motion to incorporate, to incorporate any of Frank's comments or concerns, or do you want to stand on the motion?
I want to stand by what he said.
Okay, so then, and the second stance. Thanks. My comments just around the budget are, first of all, thanks, thanks, Bob, Bill, the finance staff, Julie, and Bob Armelin, if you're still out there watching. Hello. Great, you know, it is great work, and just as a reminder, that, you know, the things that are going to continue to present themselves to this board and on future boards are the investment and emergency services, both in fire and EMS, and I want to keep bringing that up because it is important that that service gets built out to the appropriate level for a township of our size and both in area and number of residents. So we'll continue to see that, and I was happy to hear you say, Bob, that we're going to run the townships, the Country Club, like a business, because it is a business and it should run like a business, and it should stand on its own, and I agree with all the things that you said about that. And it is about making tough decisions at times, and sometimes you have to do things that you don't necessarily want to do, and other times with that, you just push them off for years. So I appreciate the agony that you go through, you know, making these decisions. It can be a struggle at times. Other than that, I'm in, I'm in support of the budget, so I'll just call the motion at this point.
Do you want to have one other comment?
Sure, please.
Yeah, just on the Country Club, I mean, I know people have different opinion. Frank, I would encourage you to go to the Country Club sometime and see it. I mean, I haven't been there for, as I know, for many, many years, and I, if I could talk, please.
Go ahead.
I think there's a lot of improvements. Obviously, COVID was a major event to many things throughout the township, but I know a lot of people through the township support the Country Club. I personally was there today for some business meeting. I'm supporting the club through my business, and the place is crowded, and people are there, people are taking advantage of it, and people love the Country Club. And the improvements they're making, the Country Club's turning around. It's making a profit now, it's going to lower taxes in the future, and people are very happy about it. And, you know, I know you voted against it, and that's fine, but I think you need to go out there, and you should see the Country Club, talk to the members, talk to the people who work there, and see all the improvements that have been made there. I mean, it's a whole nother place, and I encourage all the residents to do that. This is our asset, our property, and we need to support it, and I would just encourage you to go there and see it. That's all I would say, and I fully support it. I mean, it's, it's not, and not a day goes by, I don't see somebody, and people come up to you and say, boy, that was a great concept, that was a great, you know, deal that you guys did. And I literally was there today, and I happened to be there on Monday night, too, and I'm 110% supportive of it, so. But see it, stop by, visit the place.
It's beautiful.
But we have always wanted it to be separate. We don't want taxpayers' money to be used, and I think that Bob Armelin and now Julie and, you know, our staff work very hard on keeping it separate and making sure that our enterprise fund is not part of the general fund. I hope that as it grows, just like you said, our taxes, maybe we can help bring our taxes down, because it, it's known now. I mean, people really want to go there, and people want to have their banquets there and everything else, and people want to have their weddings there, and it's, it's a, it's a good thing. And basically, a majority of this board voted for it, therefore, we as supervisors need to see that it succeeds. So that's my opinion.
If I could add one more thing.
Be crisp.
Maybe it's not, maybe it's not apparently visible when you look at the budget, but there are, there's about $200,000 that, that we charge the Country Club for administration, a portion of my salary, a portion of Bill's salary, the assistant manager, and the finance staff. So in that respect, it does help the general fund in keeping, in minimizing taxes in that area. So, and that was the plan all along. My, my thought was, as the Country Club grew and, and we could justify it, we would, we would pass some expense on to that enterprise and, and help keep, keep our taxes down. And I think you'll see that as time goes on, as we dig out of this financial hole. It was an unexpected thing, and certainly we were on a good trajectory until 2020.
Thanks. I'll call the vote. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll do some liaison reports. Kim?
Yes, the seniors would like to thank everyone who participated in this year's holiday resale and holiday marketplace. Both events were a lot of fun and a huge success. The generosity and support of the seniors and the Northampton community is greatly appreciated. There are many interesting and exciting activities planned for 2022, a lot to look forward to. Keep an eye on the center's website, northhamptonsc.com for all the details. The staff and members of the center want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. Now Parks and Rec. Park and Rec never stops amazing me. This year, with COVID still looming, our staff did not want to disappoint our residents this holiday season, so our very popular storytime with Mrs. Claus was scheduled outdoors at the municipal park's Wetzel Pavilion. Mrs. Claus traveled a great distance on December 4th and was so thrilled to see so many good little boys and girls. As a special surprise, Santa and two of his reindeer in training greeted the children and posed for photos, making it a memorable holiday for all. Thank you to the Council Rock Education Association for their support of this event. Keeping with the holiday spirit, the municipal park is decorated again this season. The Trail of Cheer is filling the park with music. The Bucks County Women's Chorus has provided pre-recorded caroling sessions along the park pathway, so you can listen or sing along with a push of a button. We'd also like to thank the Rock United Girl Scout Service Unit, who decorated the trees along the mall area. A community tree is displayed near the amphitheater for everyone to add ornaments representing the many ways that people celebrate. It's a real, it really makes a walk in our park extra special during the holidays. Have you driven around the township and taken in all the unbelievable decorated houses? Do you have a favorite, or are you one who goes overboard and decorates your house? If so, then be a part of Light the Night contest. Residents who decorate can submit their addresses to be eligible to win the People's Choice Award. And for those who love to look at the decorations, you can drive to the many holiday displays that have been pinned on a Google map, which is posted on the Park and Rep website, northhamptonrec.com. Voting will take place through December 31st, with winners announced through the first year in January 2022. Finally, Parks and Rec Board and Staff wishes, wants to wish all township residents wishes for a wonderful and safe holiday season and a Happy New Year. And I also would like to say, everyone have a wonderful holiday, no matter what you celebrate, be safe, and I hope it's a blessed holiday for everyone.
Thanks, Kim. Frank?
Well, I have no report. This is my last meeting, and I will have to say that the five and a half years have been very interesting. I wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday and New Year, and since this is the last time I get to talk up here, I'm going to take advantage of my opportunity to say something about my grandson, Matt. Matt's an Eagle Scout, graduated from Bloomsburg University, and went into the Pennsylvania National Guard as an infantryman. Why infantryman? I don't know, but he went in as an infantryman. And Matt is the fifth generation, fifth consecutive generation of military service in my family. So I really, I do appreciate what he's done there, and shortly after going in and passing going through basic, he got activated for the COVID mission and supporting protecting Philadelphia. This week, and one of the reasons why it was a little late at the earlier meeting night, Matt graduated from Montgomery County Police Academy. So we had a very pleasant, we had a very pleasant family gathering together today, celebrating that event with Matt. So congratulations, Matt.
Congratulations, Frank.
Congratulations, Matt, and thank Matt. Military service, for sure.
I just have a question. Is the authority changing its name?
The authority is looking at that. We, one of the things that the authority is doing, and it's in this budget, is bringing someone in to assist us with how we can improve our interactions and communications with all of our residents. I think the authority is probably technically one of the best water and sewer authorities in Bucks County, but there's certainly room for improvement in what we, how we get information out to our residents. There's, there's no question about that. So, and one of the issues that has been raised is just the name, the authority. It just has sort of a negative message to it. So yes, the authority is going to look at that and see if we can come up with a better, you know, a better name.
Okay.
That's a long way of answering your question.
I just heard that, and I didn't know what they were going to be called.
Neither do they.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Barry?
The only thing I want to do is wish everybody happy holidays.
Do you have your light on?
No, I'm sorry. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and a safe holiday travel season. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
The library board, the meeting has now been changed to the second Thursday of the month, and it is now going to start at 7:00 PM. Also, we will be having a new library director. His name is Wayne Lair, and he comes from the Bucks County Library System, with most recently being, serving as the branch manager for Quakertown. His first day will be January 3rd. Please welcome him when you are at the library. Our trash update is starting December 16th. There are some changes to yard waste collections. All yard waste dumpsters will no longer be available. Please do not drop your yard waste bags at any of the locations where dumpsters were. Yard waste pickup will return to the normal winter schedule, which is on the same day as your trash pickup. You will be limited to five containers of yard waste.
be limited to five containers of yard waste. Cans and plastic bags may be used, but only during this time. Tree branches and shrubbery must be cut into pieces of 36 inches long. We will be having our Christmas tree collection sometime in January.
17.
January 17th. Mr. Work just yelled it up to me. January 17th will be the day when you should put out your Christmas trees to be picked up by our trash collector. Please do not put them at your curb before that time. That's that.
Can I just jump in one second? I just got a clarification. So there will be one final Saturday pickup this weekend coming. So for those that put yard waste out from Sunday until tomorrow.
Okay.
They won't have to wait in a whole nother week. Mr. Pellegrino assured us that he'll make sure that Mascara does one final pickup this Saturday.
Okay. Because on our website, it said.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
As Frank said, tonight is our last meeting, and I have had the most wonderful experience being a supervisor in this township. The administration and all of the employees are amazing people who do a great job because they are passionate about what they do, and they actually care about our township. I tried my best to serve you, the residents. I always did what I thought was right, and I was always prepared. I had the pleasure of being a liaison on many of the boards and commissions, and met many residents who were volunteers. I always said that you were all my residents. Politics goes out the window when you become a supervisor. We must be a team to be able to serve this township. Every supervisor I served with through the years taught me something. We disagree without being disagreeable. Over the years, I have worked with many people who have come and gone. I would be remiss if I did not mention George Kamaloski, who was my mentor and dear friend for many years. To our professionals, thank you for your advice and patience. To this present board, I really felt like we were a family, and I will miss our meetings, our telephone calls, our breakfasts, and most of all, knowing that I had four people watching my back always. I am sorry Lisa is not here tonight for me to thank her for all she has done to keep me on the right track. She is an important reason why we have such a well-run township. Bill, when you were hired, I just had a feeling that you were going to be an asset to our township, and I was right. You have become a friend. Thank you. Bob came on board as our township manager around the same time I became a supervisor. We've been together for 12 years, longer than some marriages. Thank you for teaching me, allowing me to vent, keeping me sane during some years, and making me feel always that my opinion was important. As you heard earlier, when Ms. Sarah was here, I will still be active in volunteering for this township, but I will be a resident and not an elected official. Thank you all for everything, and this has been an excellent trip that I have been on for the last 12 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. For my report, I have a few things. First, Frank, you scared me when you said you were going to take this time to do something. I thought you had 170-page PowerPoint to go through with us. I was worried. I didn't know where we were going. That's only Bob. That was a great story. Just a few things to report. Fire Department did a visit with Santa on the last Saturday at the township building. It was an outdoor event. It was an opportunity for families to come and have a picture with Santa and the fire truck. It was well-attended. Probably would have been better. It was a little foggy and rainy in the morning, and I think that did keep some people away. But it was a nice event to get families out. We had the Lions Club, had hot chocolate. Mrs. Silver was kind enough to supply the hot chocolate to the residents. She took care of the cost for that, so hot chocolate was free that day for our residents, so thank you for that. And we had a couple hundred families come by, and it was great. And I think we'll probably do it again next year. I know the fire department and the firefighters all enjoyed it, and I know the residents did as well.
Do you think Santa did?
Santa probably enjoyed it. He was a trooper for four hours.
Yes, he was. And I want to tell everyone that packed, 25 firefighters were all around, people were everywhere, and the alarm went off. I never saw people move so fast in my whole life. They were out of there in no time. The trucks were gone, the cars were gone, the people were gone, the firefighters were gone, and there was Santa with a few kids and nobody else, because they all went to protect our resident who had called in for a fire in their home. So it was amazing to watch that. I had never, ever been in a fire station when an alarm went off like that. And to see those guys all around just talking and, you know, having fun, and then all of a sudden, zoom, they were gone. It was really amazing. Thank you. Thank you, your firefighters, for that.
I do have a bias, but they are a hard-working group of people, that's for sure. So Santa was a great event. The other thing I wanted to report that's also Fire Department is, if you've seen the Fire Department Facebook page today, you know, last week, there was a horrific tornado that came through Kentucky and some other states. And it was, I think, the longest recorded tornado in history, 200-plus miles before it ended. And it devastated many towns and cities. And we saw, in the Fire Department this week, through our kind of media exchange, there was some donations getting together for equipment to help some of the fire departments who really lost everything. Firehouses just leveled, all the equipment gone. They have nothing. So there was some donation requests for equipment, and we were considering donating some equipment. Coincidentally, at the same time in the Fire Department, we had a 20-year-old truck that was due to retire its service this week and was going to.
Is that the truck?
Oh, there it is. There it is. Engine 83. This is the truck that, it is 20 years old, a little over 20 years old. And it was stationed out of Churchville for its entire life, and it was supposed to be disposed this week. We decided to give them a call down in Kentucky. We found a Fire Department in Mayfield, Kentucky, which turns out to be the epicenter of some of the destruction. They have no fire trucks left. They don't even have a firehouse. And we asked them if they wanted the truck. And they cried. They were so excited to get a truck. So here, this truck, which is basically at its end of life, is going to get a little bit more life, and it's leaving tomorrow morning at 4:00 AM, full of equipment donated from our department and other departments around here, firefighting gear, anything extra anybody had, that we could help them get a Fire Department started for their community down there. So again, it's leaving at 4:00 AM tomorrow. We have four members of Northampton Fire that are going to drive it down there. It's a 14-hour drive, and they're going to deliver the truck tomorrow and help Mayfield, Kentucky restart their Fire Department so that they can protect the community. And the thing that I like most about this is, you know, when you talk about communities and things like that, we don't know these folks at all. We don't know anybody in Mayfield Fire Department. I don't think any of us ever did. But they're in our community, and communities help communities. And so the people in Northampton should be happy and proud that we were able to help another community kind of get through this disaster. It's called paying it forward. I hope we never need the same. So pretty exciting. Keep an eye on the Facebook page. There's a lot of information and news about that. I want to say thank you to the folks that really help us run the township. Bob Pellegrino, just phenomenal work. Bill, thank you so much for all the support to the board. And I'm somewhat speaking on behalf of the board. I know each of them said it. Lisa, who's not here, Lisa is the magic behind the scenes a lot, who really does pull a lot of the levers to get things done. And all the township staff, you really do help us make better decisions. You help us stay informed, available to us at all hours of the day and night when we have questions. So just, the township is as good as it is, as much as the supervisors and the staff as well. So thank you.
Just one, I would like to welcome our two new supervisors to our board. And I know that they will be welcomed by our staff and by everyone up here. And if they ever need anything, they can call Frank. No, I'm sorry. If they need anything.
Paula Gasper and Bob Solzer are out here in the audience, waiting to take their seats here next month.
So please, if you have any questions, please give us a call. We will help with anything. And again, welcome.
And just from me personally, to everybody, happy holidays, happy New Year. And we will see you all again in 2022. 2022. That's it. That's the right, had to go through that. Next up is managers report. By the way, we will have public comment at the end. I don't think anybody signed up, but if anyone wanted to email in, publiccomment@nhtwp.org if you have a public comment. Next up, Bob.
I want to thank the supervisors for all of your support this year. It's been a difficult two years. You have been terrific. I especially want to thank Frank and Eileen. You've been great board members. You've challenged me once in a while, but that's okay. And I'm certainly up for that. And I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Paizo, solicitors report?
I don't think so.
There we go.
Very simply, just wanted to thank you all as the end of the year is approaching. Thank you all for the opportunity to once again have been of service to all of you and to the citizens that you're elected to represent. It's been an honor and a pleasure. Mrs. Silver, Mr. O'Donnell, it's been a pleasure working with both of you. I wish you well as you ascend from the dais and wish you many, many happy days. I know that your involvement in the community extends far beyond just one meeting a month. So do enjoy some well-earned time off as you leave elected office. Looking forward to working with the newly-elected supervisors next year, if that is the pleasure of all of you. And finally, just wanted to wish you all a very merry Christmas, Happy New Year, again, to all of you, to the staff here, and to the citizens of Northampton Township. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Engineers report. Pass that over.
I would just echo Mr. Paizo. It was a pleasure serving with both of you and assisting you. If you ever have any stormwater questions in the future, feel free to call me. And to the rest of the board as well. And welcome to our two new supervisors. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to assist in anything you guys need also. And happy holidays and happy New Year. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. And we don't have any public comment, right? So two more quick items. First, I just wanted to say, I meant to say it earlier, just wanted to thank the board for trusting me to be your chair this year. It's an honor to serve as the chair, and it was enjoyable, but thanks for all the support you gave me in order to make it successful. I do appreciate that. And I have one final piece of business, and I'm going to ask Eileen and Frank to come down to the floor, to the microphone, and I'll meet you there.
So just on behalf of all the residents of Northampton Township, the remaining Board of Supervisors and the staff, we just wanted to say thank you for your service. The township's a better place for both of you being here. And everybody does try hard. I appreciated your comments earlier about, hey, we do try hard, and that is true. Everybody does work from the heart, and clearly, you both worked from your heart to try to make Northampton a better place. Personally, I just wanted to say, Eileen, I've known you for many, many years. You've always been a fantastic supporter and friend, and I was very happy to work with you. I liked what you said about the way the board works. Frank, I've known you a little less time, but I feel like we have become friends, and I appreciate all your counsel. We've had some fun debates on the phone. Sometimes we get to the same place, sometimes we don't. But I think I'm a better supervisor for it, so thank you for your help. And we do have a little gift for both of you. And I'm just going to hold this for a second. It says, "Thank you." It says, "Thank you." 2021 has the township seal on it. And so why do we have champagne? Because I want you to both celebrate, we want you to both celebrate, all the good things you did for the township. And there's no better way to celebrate than with some bubbly. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. I'm glad to work with all of you. Either you want to say?
I would like to also say, like Eileen said, that this board has definitely been my favorite out of all the ones that I've served with. We always seem to hash it out, talk, but treat each other with respect. And the one thing I did learn, when Eileen and I first started working together, we were on the Park and Rec Comprehensive Plan. And I really didn't know Eileen, and we kind of were not friendly. But what I learned was, is we both want the same things for our community. We all do. We all want good roads, and we all want good trash pickup, and we want our police and our fire to be funded. And we want everything to, we all want the same things. We might go a different way. It's kind of like a map. I might want to go this way, and everybody else might want to go another way. But we all want the same things. And so I just realized that we all want the same things for our community. And Frank, too. Frank, you've done a great job with our veterans, and I've gone to many of your events. You did a great job. But I just want to say that this was a wonderful experience working with you guys.
I just want to echo the same thing that Adam and Kim said. It was really a real pleasure working with both of you. And yeah, I remember Frank, when Frank came on board, he was very quick to, a quick study. And Eileen was the expert that we consulted with all the time, too. So that was good. It was good having somebody to kind of take us under, me under the wing when I first came on the board and things like that. And I was very happy. Frank, I think he did an excellent job with the Veterans Affairs, things like that. And, you know, he had a lot of great advice. So thank you both very much. Thank you.
So one last picture of the five of us up here, and then we'll call the meeting. Thanks. You guys are in the middle.
Oh, I have my bottle.
Don't open it.
A gift with utility.
There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This was very nice.
See, it's a lot better, because I think in the past, they used to give out wheelchairs. Not wheelchairs, rocking chairs, wasn't it?
This is actually very positive. It's a positive. With no other business, the meeting is adjourned.